Sit down, and we're gonna begin in just a second. So, I'm sure the mayor will be here shortly, but we'll get started. I appreciate everyone coming to the Joint School Committee and City Council meeting on Monday, May 1st. If everyone will rise and salute the flag, say their pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
So, I know that on our agenda does not state a public forum, and I'm sorry that that was omitted, but we, with everyone's consent, will...oh, here comes the mayor. Perfect timing. Do we do the pledge? We're waiting for you.
Well, I can guarantee the rest of you will belong to Justice Division.
We were gonna do the public forum.
Yep.
So, if anybody wants to come up and speak into the microphone, please say your name and address, please.
Hi, Gary Zimmerman, Lynn Haven Road. I'm here to talk about the budget. I'm guessing this is the hardest thing you do all year, or at least the most time-consuming. Every year, there seems to be a budget issue. I'm not involved with the process, but I do see some things looking in from the outside, so I have a couple of questions. If you didn't have to bus certain kids all around the state at a cost of two-plus million dollars, would you have a deficit? If you didn't have LCE school at a cost of at least $600,000-plus, would that help your deficit? In the old days, when you went to school, you went to school that was in your town. If you went somewhere else, the family had the financial responsibility to get them there or pay tuition. Now, our government spends money, the taxpayer money, like it's a penny candy. Times have changed with education, that's for sure. Busing is a huge cost to the city and the taxpayers. Over half the busing budget is for a small percentage of kids that need to be bused outside the district because we can't supply the education here in Lemonster. To me, something has to give because the burden continues to be put on the taxpayer. I think, for the most part, the taxpayers want to help, but when does it stop? LCE, I myself don't think this should be where it is, at City Place now. If this is the future, then build a wing off another school or put up some pods so the resources can be shared. You have a principal managing a school of five to eight people, making six figures. You have a nurse for 40 kids, when you have nurses in other schools taking care of hundreds of kids. You have a teacher-to-kid ratio of around eight to 10 to one. At other schools, it can be 30 to one. I think I heard there was a therapist at the school also, but not sure. If you could share the administrative resources, I bet that would equate to at least two to three teachers. It's so easy for our government to spend taxpayers' money, but it isn't their money. The hard part is saying no to some things. The answer isn't always getting more money, it's spending it wisely. And all level of governance need to do better in this area. Again, I think everyone wants to help, but the taxpayers also have families to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary? Would anyone else like to address the committee and the council? If so, microphone. Aim for the record, please.
Hi, Natalie Higgins, 333 Elm Street, also State Representative for Lemonster. I just want to thank you for hosting this forum, allowing us to be able to hear from both the City Council and the School Committee. The House just finished up our budget, and we are forever in a tough spot when it comes to funding. I feel you, I know what's going on. But as a proud graduate of the Lemonster Public School System, the first in my family to go to college to be able to be your state representative now, I want to make sure...I hope to have kids in the school system one day. I am really worried that my kids are gonna have the same quality education that I had, that my brother had through the trade school. So, I know it's in a really tough place right now, but I hear of things like one-and-a-half million-dollar gap in special ed funding. If that doesn't get funded, that means kids and their families are forced to send their kids out of district, that they have every legal right to do, and it's gonna cost us even more money and going to create an even bigger problem. So, I am working as hard as I can on the state level to make sure things like the Fair Share Constitutional Amendment passes so that we have a billion dollars of new funding just for public education, never mind a billion new dollars for good jobs through public infrastructure investments. But I'm hoping that you all take a hard look and make sure that we invest in the right way in education when we know that there's such a huge return on investment when we invest in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the committees? And the council?
Hi, good evening. My name's Andrea Freeman, 431 Pleasant Street here in Lemonster. I have no children in this school system, and I hope not to. We do not have children, and I care deeply about the quality and the strength of our school systems here. Again, not for my family's sake, but for our whole communities. If our roof was caving in, if our roof had leaks, we know it would take a lot of money to fix the roof on our home, but it's an essential, fundamental investment for many reasons, just as is our public school system for the benefit of everybody. If we don't, I know sometimes this sounds like a lot of extra money, but the fact that Lemonster has...for years, we've been very, very close to the bare minimum of spending, of school spending, for our public school systems, whereas the average of other school systems around the state is 20% higher than what we in general spend. That's the average. So, that means that some is higher, granted, some are lower, but we are in the bottom...we're in the bottom of the bucket. And it just does not seem worth not investing in our public school systems. It feels like we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater by not investing. I know these are hard decisions. I know you all have some very tough decisions to make, and I encourage you, as a non-mother, please invest in our schools.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the committee?
Jasmine Tittle, 34 Second Street here in Lemonster. I am a parent. I am a parent of an atypical child, and I'm also a parent of a special needs child. And I have been at almost every meeting about this budget, and I am praying that the right decision's been made. Like I said, I have two children on both sides of the fence, and they're both important. If, as far as the busing issue and the out-of-district, I hope that the money goes where it belongs because my son's coming up to a point where we may have to make that choice to go out of district or not. And I don't want to have to if we can spend the money wisely in the system and put the proper people in place so that our kids can get the education that they need right here at home. I've had an excellent, excellent experience where my son is at, with both of my children, actually, and I would like to see that continue, and not just for my kids, but for everybody in the community. And I know how many parents have struggled to get through this, and I have friends that are struggling with their children in the system. We need to fix it on all levels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the committee?
Melissa Bible, 178 Fifth Street, Lemonster. I have a four-year-old, a sixth and eighth grader at Skyview, and a freshman in an out-of-district placement. For my child in out-of-district, I would love for him to be able to return to Lemonster, and I would love for Lemonster to not have to pay daily for him to be transported to Newton. But he does because in mediation four years ago, it was said by the Lemonster District staff that my child had been chronically underserved by Lemonster Schools for six years. I would love him to be able to return, but you're not returning a child who is now doing amazingly well in ninth grade to send him back to Lemonster, where he was recently evaluated again in Boston. And the opinion by the specialists in Boston of Lemonster is that this is a district in big trouble. And if that's the opinion of specialists in Boston, I wonder what teachers that we hope to be hiring in the future will think of the district when they want to come work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the School Committee? Once again, one last time. Okay, close this push here to the meeting, Mr. President. And we have an agenda here that I think we've shared. We'll stick to the agenda. And I know the City Council is well aware of sort of the budget drivers in the city. You do the budget every year, you get a balance sheet every month, and so you're well aware of sort of some of the dynamics that are...are sort of drive the budget every year.
Dean, I'm sorry to interrupt if I could. Can I just officially take a roll call of our members here this evening?
Sure.
So, we'll start with Counselor Feckley.
Present.
Okay, Counselor Lancy Enney.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
I am present.
Counselor Marchand.
Present.
Counselor Jabrowski.
I'm here.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. Okay, and so there are seven members present, and I believe there will be another one coming soon. He's on his way? Okay.
Yes, okay. You all set? All right? Okay. So, we'll begin with item two, which is the driving factors of the fiscal year 18 budget. And there are a couple of them. The biggest ones that are really sort of driving the budget. And in our...the way that I've asked...you have a month left to put a budget together, the way I've left it with the School Committee is to submit a budget to the mayor's office that would be a net school spending budget as a baseline and with options and alternatives. So, if the baseline, if net school spending, if we had additional dollars to spend above net school spending, where would those dollars specifically be used? So, that communication will be passed on to you, so you'll know if there's around $100,000 spent above net school spending, you will know exactly what those funds would be for, a breakdown of what they are, and how they'll be used, in priority, so that the whole community can see what those priorities are over net school spending. And in fact, the whole budget should be communicated in that level. Superintendent, I'm not sure, did you want to take this, and we can have the Finance Committee sort of talk a little bit? They've been working way above and beyond what a Finance Committee typically would do on a School Committee for the last several years to try to get a budget, get it so that it's transparent, meaningful, understandable, and clear, and have been working diligently on that. Kristen, did you want to touch on that and do it quick?
I think that we're all thrilled that Glenn is here. We have uncovered some really good lines now. I think that what you will see over the next four weeks should have a lot of meaning, where in the past couple of years, we just had trouble having it all total correctly. So, I'm excited he's here. Thank you. Superintendent did a lot of work into all of this as well, and, you know, it's tough. I mean, I think everyone knows what we face. You know what you face on your side, we know what we face here, and hopefully we'll have everything in a nice priority so we know how we'll be able to run our district based on the money we receive.
So, Glenn, we touched on it in our last meeting on sort of the...just getting into the very process before we even begin the year of the things that we're already obligated to. So, did you want to touch on those?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reiterate what the mayor said about the Finance Committee having met on a regular basis for the past two and a half months, almost every other week, and that primary focus is trying to put together a budget for FY18, but also to try and figure out a way to get through FY17. There are some significant challenges that we're facing. If I get a chance, I'll review the transportation issue that's on your agenda. At the moment, I'll just run by some of the line items that we've been discussing. When you start with the budget, you start with revenues, and we know what our revenues will be based on the net school spending requirement. So, looking at the numbers provided by House Bill 1, the state increase in Chapter 78 to Lemonster will be $122,460. That's $20 per student. The amount of money provided by the state, I mean, the local government, as required by the state, is $325,750. And we have another large increase based on school choice. We supplement our revenues by bringing in students from other districts in order to help offset expenses. That's estimated $308,939. So, we're getting more money by taking in school choice students than we'll be getting from the state. Also understand that the state provides roughly 61% of our total school budget, and the city provides approximately 39% of our school budget under the aid-to-education formula. The one other increase that we'll be looking at are tuitions. We're starting to charge tuitions for CTEI next year, and we'll also be charging tuitions for students out of district who participate at LCE, the Lemonster Center for Excellence. That'll be about $46,000. So, our total estimated increase in revenues over this year is a little over $800,000, $803,149. Projected increases in expenditures. We have negotiated contracts with numerous unions in the district, and without going into the full detail, which I can, that's $2,048,700 for anticipated increases if we keep all existing personnel. No increase in personnel. All current staff members stay. That's broken down by COLA of $934,000, step increase is $843,000, lane change is $146,000, and full funding of positions that were partially funded this year at $125,000. I'll provide a copy of this document. I didn't make copies, but you'll get copies of this. For health insurance, that is basically what's driving our budget into the ground. I'll give you an explanation later, but in effect, we're gonna need almost $2 million just to meet the health insurance costs of our personnel as compared to what was budgeted this year. I'll explain later, but it's about $2 million for health insurance. We're also seeing a nominal increase in out-of-district tuitions. It was commented earlier that we send a number of children out of district for given their needs. Just remember that that number has decreased significantly over the past five or six years, that students that would have been sent out of district five, four, three, two years ago are now in district with special programs. So, the money that was spent out of district is now being spent in district with programs that are appropriate for the children. That number's gonna down, but we'll still see a nominal increase based on the rate of inflation of the number of students who are currently placed out of district. And then transportation. I'll also talk about that if you give me a chance. But the bottom line is, total projected increase in expenses, just status quo, is $4.423 million. Revenue increase, $803,000. We're looking at a projected deficit of $3.6 million as we start the budget process. That doesn't take into consideration issues that we're dealing with this year, where we're currently in deficit. So, it's not a positive outlook. This is the lowest increase in Chapter 78 net school spending that Lemonster has seen in many, many years. It's a 0.63% increase in the net school spending budget. As a reflection, the city makes a major contribution to the increase in that net school spending number. That's 0.46% in the amount of money that the state is requiring the city to contribute. It's sobering, I know. If, if I may, I do have some sheets on health insurance and transportation. They're relatively simple to understand. I'll start with transportation. I hope they're have to go around.
Glenn, I just want to make sure that when you say the $2 million for health insurance, that's the increase, not the cost.
No, no. Yes. Again, these are the types of documents that the Finance Committee has asked me to prepare for the last six meetings. So, it's real easy to put this information together, and I've tried to do it in an easy-to-understand manner. We'll start with FY16's actual expenditures for transportation. We spent $4.295 million in transportation. As mentioned earlier, more than half of our expenses are related not to the big buses that you see throughout the city, but more to our special needs population. So, we spent $4.295,497 last year, yet we budgeted $3,234,649 this year. Understand that transportation is not a component of the net school spending budget. That's excluded from the budget, but it is...has been included in the school budget, but at the direction of Finance Chairman Kristin Howlett, we have considered that as a separate item outside of our operating budget for the purpose of reviewing this year's expenditures. So, we started the budget at $3.234 million. We're projecting $4.87 million expenditures in transportation. The five-year proposal for bus contracts for regular buses was opened in June during the budget process, and it was significantly higher than prior years. In district sped, we're using small buses with monitors to transport the students within district. Our out-of-district sped is very, very expensive. When you consider 71 to 74 students attending out-of-district schools, we're spending $1.2 million in that regard. And the last item is Bikini Vento Transportation. Those are the students categorized as homeless by the state. We transport students from Gardner, Fitchburg, Lunenburg, the students that are either attending school here and live in homeless status elsewhere, or we transfer students who live here and go to schools elsewhere. We share in the cost of that transportation, but our burden this year will be about $153,000. That's less than what we've been considering. We went through the encumbrances as directed by the Finance Committee. We were able to winnow down that expenditure, those encumbrances, this past week. So, the bottom line is offsets to the FY17 expenses. We have the original city appropriation of $3.234 million, subtracting this from the projected cost of $4.8 million. We've charged user fees. We've been collecting those in October, collected them through February. $100 per student, $175 max per family. Students for families that A. are not on sped-defined buses, B. are not on homeless buses, and C. are not collecting free or reduced lunch. That represents about 25 to 30% of the students who ride on our buses were required to pay user fees, and it wasn't easy to collect that $53,000. We also subtract the appropriation approved by the City Council last week of $860,914. Though that represented Medicaid reimbursement for services provided by the schools to our students last year. We're still looking at a projected deficit of $727,850 this year. And again, that's a line item that is not part of net school spending, but we're required to cover the expenses. Any questions on transportation before I move on to health insurance? Yes, sir.
So, you have an asterisk under fiscal '17 budget, saying that the figures represent rollover of fiscal '16 budget figures. What's that number that's rolled over?
So, whatever number was in the FY16 budget, we rolled it into the FY17 budget.
So, you don't mean that you were paying last year's expense in current year?
Last year's expenses were significantly more than what were in the budget last year.
So, how much was that, though?
It was about $1 million, $1,050,000 more in cost last year than in budgeted last year. And that was, as you know, supplemented by either school choice or primarily by school choice funds.
So, the amount rolled over for fiscal '16 transportation expenses, the amount rolled over into fiscal '17 is a million?
No. The numbers that were used in the FY16 budget were the same numbers that were used in the FY17 budget. Perhaps I used the wrong term when I said rolled over. They were replicated from one year to the next.
Plus, there was a 70...we increased it by $78,000 because the contract went up by that much. So, we basically took '16's numbers and used them again for '17, and added $78,000 for the increase in the contract. But that clearly wasn't enough.
Also understands who...in September of last year, you appropriated $245,000 of school choice money to pay the deficit from FY16, and that money is included in that $4295. So, you didn't have enough money last year, and you didn't have more than enough money this year. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that people watching and listening understand the difference. The out-of-district transportation is for kids who are placed out of district because we don't have the services they need here. We are not transporting kids who are school choicing to other districts, and I just want to make sure people understand that and don't confuse the two. We transport these out-of-district placements because the services they need through their IEPs and services can't be provided here, so they're going to programs out of district. This is not school choice kids.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure.
Other questions on transportation expenses last year and this year? I understand we're going into next year with the full understanding that we need to find ways to reduce this expenditure. There are some cost items that we can't reduce, but we're looking at consolidating routes. Committee that Heather got together in the fall, probably neighborhood bus stops. There are options we have. We're bringing consultants, primarily on a grant, to help us look at some of these opportunities. But once the routes are fixed, it's hard to eliminate a bus or cut off stops which people are used to. There's gonna have to be some significant change, given the funding level for transportation, and we are fully aware of that. Things have to change. Okay?
And then we'll move on now to the 2017, 2021 capital expenditures.
Yeah, health insurance. Did we talk about?
Oh, did you want to clarify?
Yep, sure.
Extra cost in health insurance?
Health insurance, to no one's surprise, the increase in health insurance are increasing much more significantly than the cost of inflation. And I have to say that being able to keep health insurance increases at a rate of 6% is amazing, and that's what Lemonster had did last year and is projected to do next year. A lot of other districts in... A lot of other districts and cities and towns went into kick, and they're looking at double-digit increases in health insurance. Fortunately, you're doing a great job, Leominster's doing a great job in controlling the increases in that expenditure. However, based on the foundation budget, we are spending millions of dollars more on health insurance than the budget says we should be paying. Get into the details, but I won't bother you tonight. But basically, we should be spending $6.8 million this year on health insurance, and we'll be spending closer to $9.5 million. Actually, $11.5 million, excuse me. We wish we were only spending $9.5 million. So FY16 actual expenditures for health insurance out of the general fund of our school's general operating budget was $9,490,670. That's net of all grants and other sources of revenue like creative choices. However, we did have to subsidize it from school choice funds, again, by $1.3 million. So we actually spent $10,791,506 last year. The budget, again, I came after the budget was done, and I have the budget in my hand, was $9,353,438. We're projecting spending $11,439,000. The second asterisk you see is that $11,439 represents a 6% increase of actual expenditures in FY16. So the difference between the FY17 budget and what we're projecting is a $549,194 deficit for active employees and a $1,536,368 deficit for retired employees for a net deficit of $2,085,562. Actual expenditures compared to budget. Now, I understand, looking at transportation and health insurance, why the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee of the School Committee has been working earnestly to find every opportunity either to save expenses or to raise revenues. These numbers are stock, but these are real. And any questions on health insurance?
Okay, we'll move now on to the capital expenditure overview.
Thank you for all that information.
Sure.
I do have a question. I have a couple of questions. You know, for health insurance, you know, for the retired employees to, you know, almost double, I guess the actuals are almost double, right? What the projected was. Does the insurance company provide information and tell you why that is? I mean, why did that happen? Is it an anomaly? Is it a trend that?
Well, it's not a trend.
Well, right, but I would think that that would be very important to know. Kristin, yeah?
So what actually happened with that is, this is the difficulty with our budget, to be honest, in capturing a lot of these expenses. A few years ago, our previous business manager moved that 1.3, it was a little bit less than that at the time, out of our general fund into school choice to offset health insurance. By doing so, we lost the ability to capture what the escalation was. So that FY17 budgeted amount of $941 was what was in our general budget, not what we knew we were going to spend. But we're not able to capture that completely because it's sitting out in a revolving fund in school choice. So we knew we were going to spend at least $1 million. So that number could say 1.9 very easily, but because it was sitting in a revolving fund, you know, you just can't add it all up the same way. So my preference would be to move all of those lines back into our general fund so we can capture them all. In essence, that's what Glenn has done with this piece of paper. So we know we're going, that $2 million deficit, we know we'll have some money in school choice to cover something, whether it goes directly to this deficit or a different, you know, some deficit it's going to cover. But what are our anticipated revenues in school choice, Glenn? 1.5? About 1.5? So we'll have about 1.5 to use to cover some of our deficit. And it could be this. We're still short, but it's something. Would I rather use that on new science equipment and new curriculum and other things that augment as opposed to cover our operating costs? Absolutely. So the number didn't go from 900 to 2.4. We did have that captured somewhere, but not in our general fund budget.
Okay. The business manager of the business office, I'm not quite sure who, get information from the insurance company, you know, for example, if retiree costs and even, you know, given the school choice money, it still seems like there's a disconnect between, you know, what the budget was for retired costs, right, retired employees' health insurance. Do you communicate with the insurance company? I mean, is there rate setting or cost sharing that is passed on to retirees? I mean, is this part of the planning process that you get a better sense of what the costs are estimated to be by the insurance company, and then those can be shared?
What I was told, but have not actually been a part of, and I think because of our human resources, we've had turnover there as well, was that at the beginning of the year, they do comparison of lists to make sure the people that we have on our system, we're not paying for people that are gone, left the system completely, or have aged out and moved on. I haven't been a part of that. I don't, I haven't actually seen it happen. I was told that's what happens at the beginning of a year. So I will definitely be on top of that at the beginning of this school year, I think, is more when it happens, after the teachers have enrolled and picked what they want, to make sure we get a list that comes in, including the retirees, to compare as to what we're paying.
Right, certainly.
And that comes from the city, not from the health insurance company.
I'll just add to what Kristin's already said. The city oversees health insurance for all departmental employees, including the school department. Yes, including retirees.
But not OPEB.
No, but not OPEB.
Because, because, as I'm sure you understand, the way their system works is you hire an employee, you don't pay one cent towards their retired medical coverage until the day they retire. And the way the state looks at it, DESI looks at it, is the day they retire, that's when you start paying for their retirement health insurance. But the city has been making payments towards the OPEB for the teachers, and we don't get, despite the fact that people continue to say the city doesn't spend a lot of money on education. These are the little hidden places that we spend money, over $1 million in OPEB, to start to pay for that, those teachers' retirements in their health insurance, because they're going to have to get paid 30 years from now. Somebody's going to retire, and they're going to be looking for that, that healthcare, and somebody's going to have to pay for it. It's going to be 20, 50, 100 times more expensive, but we don't start paying that down. So the city has been making payments towards that, and that doesn't count towards net school spending. It's another area that we pay but don't get credit for when people compare spending on education versus spending on education in other communities. That's what allows people to take numbers and throw them all over the place and say, Leominster doesn't invest in education, or barely spends enough money. So these are some of the other hidden areas. So that does not count. The OPEB does not count. The money that we put towards OPEB does not count towards net school spending.
You know, it may not, but that's not any different than any other community. Any other community has OPEB costs, you know, associated with their school department retirees, with their school department current employees.
They're just not paying it.
Well, they all have the expense. So, you know, we're comparing apples, and I don't think anybody ever says that the city doesn't spend a lot on education. The city spends a lot on education.
No, no, I think you're misunderstanding. They're not paying it. We are.
Well, they have to pay it at some point. It's an expense that other communities have, and whether or not, you know, they're paying it now, whether or not they're paying it later, it's still, I mean, they have the same expense.
An expense is something you pay. We're paying it, it is an expense. They're not paying it. They're carrying a deficit. So what I'm saying is, that expense that we're incurring each year, that we're paying on, we don't get credit for, and it doesn't count towards the healthcare cost either. So that's over and above what we're paying in health insurance.
Right. Okay.
Again, it doesn't count towards net school spending.
Correct.
Which I think is what the point is.
Just to continue on with Kristin's comments, the city does a heck of a job controlling health insurance expenses. I can tell you, when we have a person who resigns, and they get notification from the city that that person, because you didn't pay them, didn't pay their 25% share of their health insurance for the last two weeks. You know, they tell us, either you tell them to come in and pay, or we're going to notify the health insurance company to cancel their insurance. They do a great job. They're right on top of that. And also, like Kristin said, they do provide us quarterly reports on all of the employees, every retirees that are benefiting from health insurance. And just this past week, I went through the roles for all active employees, and I found some people that weren't on the payroll but were paying health insurance for. But every one of them, there was a reason. Eight of them had changed their last names. They were females that had gotten married, but their health insurance was under their original name. And the other five or six people, they had all either resigned or retired. So it's, every single person, every account was legitimate. I just can't do the retirees. I just don't know. I don't have that information. Okay.
I have one other question I just wanted to go back to. And that has to do with the increases in revenue. And you mentioned that there was a $308,939 increase in school choice revenue, right? So is that the net of people coming in versus people going out? No.
Over the past six years, if you, again, there's a graph I can give for you. It'll show the number of students from resident pupils of Leominster going out of district to other public schools, and the number of non-resident students attending Leominster on the school choice. And the difference may have been 150 students more going out than coming in five or six years ago. It's now leveled off. More students want to come here, less Leominster students want to go out of district. I think that's a testament that people are finding that it's more, they want their kids to stay here as opposed to go to Fitchburg, Gardner, Lunenburg, Lancaster, et cetera. But the number of families that want to come in in school choice, I mean, you just talked to Gina after this meeting. Her office is inundated on a daily basis by families that want their children to come here, specifically from nearby communities, specifically in kindergarten. They want them to come to Leominster schools. For us, it's a revenue boost, but doesn't quite cover all the costs over the long term. But it's something we need to do in order to try and increase our revenues, to cover our expenses. I'll get you the graph.
Okay, we'll move now on to the capital improvements.
Okay, each of you have a handout at your location. This was a memorandum that was sent to the mayor a few weeks ago, and this is essentially a compilation as is requested every year for a five-year capital plan. The school committee has fully vetted the document, and this is very similar to the document that I've worked with, with City Council over the past few years. Just to highlight some of this, I'll allow you to take a closer look at it, and if you have any questions, contact me in my office or contact Glenn. The, we've made good use of the M.S.B.A. building authority funds, and that's been primarily due to the assistance of the mayor and City Council. In each of these cases, for the projects that are bulleted there, we've been able to get over 73% reimbursement through the M.S.B.A. grant process, and that's been carefully handled by Chris Silverman and Tony Chivirasi. So they do a great job of getting that paperwork compiled and submitted to the state. Just so that you remember, we are doing the replacement of windows at Johnny Appleseed, which will be actually the last project that's happening this summer, and that'll be the last project out of the accelerated repair projects that were filed. We did the roof last summer and windows this summer. The only project that I bring up, we haven't made any movement on filing a statement of interest on this project yet, but Fallbrook Elementary School is going to be in need of some renovation repairs in the future. But both Tony Chivirasi, who has appeared before you as our facilities director, him and I have spent a lot of time on the work that needs to be done at the building, and we really need a feasibility study to be completed on that school before we would approach a statement of interest to the state. So that's part of this document in the request for those funds. The latter part of this document really was a request from the mayor to highlight some of the higher priority building repairs out of the five-year capital plan that's in the spreadsheet at the end of the document. So what we did was, I'm not going to go through all these in detail, but you'll be able to take a look at them. We provided a snapshot narrative on each of them. But the, we do have one special capital funds request for Skyview Middle School, and that was a hot water tank that we recently replaced during the week of April 17th, which was the April break. And most of the high priority building repairs that you'll see, we've given you an approximate cost. Some of them are in need of updated quotes, but at the time that the city might be interested in funding those, we can get you that information. But a lot of these high priority projects are ones that could possibly cause a problem where we would have to shut the building down for a period of time, and we really can't afford to do that during the course of the school year. So we've highlighted those items, made sure that you're aware of what the higher priority situations are. The only other one is a project that we've been looking at for quite some time, and it's really hard to put too much of a updated price to it until we really get into looking at the project, and that's the replacement of the portable classrooms at Francis Drake School. And the portables are really well overdone, overused at that school now, and we've been requesting those funds for the last couple of years to replace those portables and upgrade the space, the additional space that's provided by those portables. So on that last page, page 404, it just gives a summary of the priority projects, and a lot of them, they don't look like a lot of money, but it does aggregate to a higher amount. But we feel that if we could get funding for these particular items, we could really accelerate some of the higher priority type of items that could cause us issues during the school year. So that's a summary of that. And then, of course, the detailed spreadsheet is provided for you over a five-year period of time.
Mr. President, as a breakdown to you and the council on, this is just everything you already know, only in one quick sort of summary. Going retroactive to the projects that we've done most recently, if you go back to Leominster High School, that was about $44 million for that project. The Drake roof in Boiler was about $2.4. Fallbrook Boiler was about $1 million. Total cost, just on those three projects, was about $47 million, and state grants paid about 31 of that. Left us with a balance of about 11, almost 11.2 million that we're making payments on, our payments on the debt service for just those three projects is about $1.7 million a year. And again, that's on top of the budget, and that's on top of net school spending. That doesn't count towards it. And I think the other key factor in here is that, if you remember, on the high school, what we did is we did some accelerated payments. Remember we did that? That was, that came to about $5.4 million that we paid for upfront in cash, so we didn't borrow anything on that, so we saved all that cost on that project as well. And then the two other projects that are pending are, as the superintendent said, the Northwest School total, cost of that project was about $3.3, and then the Johnny Appleseed School project was about 4.1, I'm sorry, $3.9. But remember, we've been, we've been doing temporary borrowing on those. We haven't gone to permanent borrow yet until we get all our projects together. So that's just to keep you sort of, a real summary of past projects that we've done and the other ones we've committed to. And the last two, we haven't done the actual calculations. We haven't done the permanent borrowing. We've been doing temporary borrowing on those. So those are the projects we're already committed to in debt service that we're already committed to on those.
Do we, do we have a list of what all the bonds are currently and when they're retiring?
Yeah, we gave you that during the police station. Remember, I think we gave that to you during, when we were talking about the police station. Those will change, obviously, but not much. But this just gives you an idea of, in fact, I'll send you a copy of this. We just did this today to update the numbers. But it'll give you an idea of what we've already committed to, because as I said, on top of the budget already, you know... the budget already, you know, this year we'll make a payment of almost 1.7 million above the school budget, above net school spending. And then we have those last two projects. So when we're through, it's probably going to be over 2 million a year in debt service. But the good part is, all of our projects we've done have been 10 years. And if you check in other municipalities, they're usually doing minimum of 20, but more than likely 30 years they're borrowing. And we know, I mean, everybody here, we've been through this a million times, the cost savings to the taxpayer when you're borrowing for 10 years, just like your home loan. Interest rates are better, and you're paying them off faster, which allows us to do more projects. So I'll get you this, I'll get a copy of this for you.
I have a question. Do any of the schools or does the school department have a maintenance line item in your expense budget? You know, to take care of some of these costs like boilers or windows or, you know, things that kind of, you know, break down in the middle of the year? I know, Jimmy, you had mentioned that, you know, you try to prepare for not having these things break down in the school year or get repaired during the school year, but I'm wondering if there's a separate maintenance budget that takes care of these things?
Yeah, we have a, we have a maintenance budget, which is primarily preventative maintenance, and Tony does a nice job of keeping up, but I think Kristen will be the first to make the statement that over time, when we've been trying to reduce expense in order to meet the requirements of the budget, those are the type of line items that technically get hit before we hit classrooms. So it has diminished over the years, but we do have a preventative maintenance budget and a maintenance budget overall, which we can take care of most of our essential type of work during the course of the year. But when we start getting into projects like I just went over in this document here, where they're 35, 40, 50, 60,000 dollar items, we just can't sustain that in our regular general fund operating budget, so.
And I think the way we've looked at it recently is projects, is it $10,000 threshold or 5,000? I forget what we moved it to, 10,000. So if it's something under 10,000, it would fall more under our preventative maintenance budget, which is sorely underfunded in my mind. You know, my thing is when you go into a lot of the buildings, the doors, you know, use other door, the door handles, not, just really basic, simple stuff, but it's expensive because sometimes you need to replace the whole door in order to, you know, the hardware's gone, or 50-year-old buildings. So that money goes towards the 6,000 kids that are just wearing on the building day to day. It doesn't take care of any of, there's nothing built in for any of this stuff. Once you hit that $10,000 limit, it's, we consider it more investment infrastructure than preventative maintenance or maintenance.
Okay. I have a question for the mayor. So, I mean, obviously, there are a lot of capital projects that are, you know, in the pipeline and currently on the books, but can, do you know, in terms of percentage of the city's total physical asset inventory, do you know how much the school department represents, just in physical assets? Is it 75%, 60%, 80? No?
I don't know. I didn't know you were going to ask me that question, but I can find out.
No, I'm just curious.
I just wanted to figure it out. I might calculate it, but I don't know, I can figure it. I'd say it's probably, you know, the bulk of the assets of the city of the school buildings. I mean, we just spent 3.2 million on a roof. So there's probably not five buildings in the city that's on the city side that are worth 3.2 million. So just the roofs alone, we've spent probably 15 million dollars between roofs, windows, heating systems on our school facilities. So it's probably 90% of the total assets for the entire city.
Right. No, I think that helps put into context, you know, all of the spending. You know, when you talk about capital projects and you talk about the investments that the city's made in capital projects for the schools that is over and above net school spending, I think people need to understand that, you know what? That's 90% of the assets that the taxpayers have paid for and that the city depends on every day, that the 6,000 kids who go to school in the school system depend on. So I just, you know, when you put it into context like that, I mean, 2 million dollars is a lot of money, but in the overall scheme of things, I mean, it really isn't.
No, I, city council, every time I've brought in appropriation to the city council, they fully understood this from the very beginning, that they wanted our buildings to be in good shape. They wanted us to save money on fuel and have, you know, not waste utilities. They've been 100% supportive of these projects right along, and I think the community knows that we're not letting our buildings fall apart. At the same time, you can see, it's become a very, it's become a struggle to maintain just our regular operating costs before even start the fiscal year. So health insurance and transportation and the cost of salaries and increases in steps are already a factor before the school year started, and we didn't do one thing different than we did the previous year. And that's what's driving our budget. And unless the foundation budget, unless our state representatives around the state get together and decide that this is, this, this system of a foundation budget that was started the day I took office 24 years ago, Council of Free was here, Suzanne was here, there were a couple of us here, we knew this thing had to be right-sized and it had to be, you know, it had to be retrofitted and updated, and haven't touched the thing in 24 years, 25 years they haven't touched foundation budget. And it's so far out of whack, and Glenn could sit here, we've talked about it on that last school committee. It's so far, and it's communities like Lummester that lose out, and it's the wealthier communities that benefit from this. So until something drastically changes, this is an absurd, outdated, foolish, and when you're talking about education and you can't get people to sit down and see the obvious here, it's a pretty bad statement to people that are in charge of education in the state who can't look at this formula and say, there's something clearly wrong here and needs to be fixed. So until that happens, you're going to see this lopsidedness continue to happen where the communities like ours are going to be penalized because of a faulty system that, you know, was invented 25 years ago and, you know, just hasn't been updated. The other, so yeah, I think the answer is the city has invested. I think people understand we need to invest, and I think people have been for support of it, especially since we borrow money for such short periods of time, and we paid down a lot of this without borrowing any money at all by doing short-term borrowing. So we've already, by the time we get to borrow, by the time we get to borrow permanently, we've already made three years' worth of payments on it, and it didn't cost us a penny for interest. So I think everyone's in agreement with all of that. I don't think anybody's complained to me about investing in maintenance in our buildings, and we'll continue to do that. Now, just one other thing, if you remember, just not many months ago, we also did the radio system that will go into the school department for safety. So it's constant. I mean, there's, there's just, we never have stopped, even in the bad economy, as you can look here, on the list that I have that I'll send you too, even when the economy got bad in '08, '09, '10, '11, '12, we continued to still invest and invest in technology at $250,000 per year in technology. We invested in our buildings. We invested, we've never, we've never not invested. Even in the, even in the bad days, we continued to invest. And I think that's been a good thing, and it's been a good investment for, for the taxpayers.
Can we talk about the $5 million for the fields? We all received a letter from constituents, and, you know, in light of the fiscal situation that we're in, the tight constraints, you know, first of all, I know the city council approved spending the $5 million, but has that actually gone out to a bond or is that part of that money that you're floating? You haven't actually gone out?
We're still in the, we're just putting, we just met tonight. We're at the very beginning of the planning stages.
So I guess, you know, given what's going on today, is it a good time, or maybe that money, some of that money could be put to better use to cover some of the shortfalls that we do anticipate, you know, with the state revenues being depleted and, you know, can we reconsider that? You know, I, I.
Well, these are reoccurring, I think what we're talking about tonight is reoccurring cost and not one-time revenues. I mean, the, the fields are one-time revenues, and it's over. And our issues are reoccurring, and I think that's what got us into this position, is looking, is using one-time dollars or funding either positions or a program on revenues that we can only commit to for one year or maybe two. Those weren't sustainable. Those weren't long-term, built into the budget. So two very different sort of styles of funding.
No, and I agree with that, but you're right. And that's been our problem, is that we've taken one-time funds, school choice, and used it to support salaries or health insurance, which are recurring costs. That's been a problem, and unfortunately, we started it and we can't get out of it. We're dependent now on revolving funds to support our health insurance costs or, I mean, that's the nature of the beast. But again, given, you know, the situation that we're in, we know we're mandated by the state special ed costs, and there is a state meeting coming up in two weeks with MASC. A lot of people are mobilizing with the issues statewide on special ed. So, you know, I'm just wondering if we can rethink how we're spending our money locally to, you know, help cover some of the shortfalls that we anticipate. Again, special ed is a given cost.
But again, two different things. Some of these are one-time, it's like saying, don't fix the roof, put it towards special ed. Two different areas. I mean, one is fixed cost, the other one is just a one-time sort of revenue. We're paying for, you know, the fields would be a one-time sort of revenue spread out over, you know, five years. So that isn't saving you anything to, to your fixed cost problem.
Right, but you could use some of the money to the recurring, in other words, you're not going to spend it all one year if you use it toward your recurring costs.
No, you're still mixing, you're still mixing them up. And no, I mean, we've, we're still going to move forward with the project for the, for the fields. It's a different funding source as not, we're not taking anything out of the school budget to pay for the fields. There's not one penny coming from the school budget. It's, it's one-time revenue. I don't, I don't see, I don't see how that's going to help the school budget at all.
It would eliminate some of our transportation costs if we had.
Oh, no question.
So I think in the long run, it's going to help support our budget.
Right, right.
I just think it's how the public perceives it. You know, they perceive, you know, the shortfalls we're talking about tonight on our budget, and we're going to spend on a field, you know, the city's going to spend on a field. I think it's the perception of it, and I think that's why it's important that if, if this is bond money, that it's clearly stated that, and, you know, the more information that can be put out about it, I think would serve the community better. And, you know, I think we're, I think we're, I mean, I just saw a, noticed about two hours before I came to this meeting that with the proposed health costs that the president wants to put forth, it would be eliminating Medicaid money, which means we won't have that money either, along with some title money that is going to be done away with. So we have some problems.
Yeah, I mean, and just look at the state. They're not taking in the revenues they anticipated.
No, I, I agree.
60%, 40% spent on mass health, and revenues aren't coming in, sort of, and reaching into the rainy day accounts to balance their budgets. So they're not going to be much help to us in those areas. So yeah, it's certainly an issue. Wendy?
I just, I wanted to clarify something because my memory is a little fuzzy on it, but I thought back when this whole field conversation started, that there was some, some reason, either a grant or something that was involved in this, that we, it wasn't money we could use for other things, that it was specifically obtained for the purpose of this field? Am I misremembering?
I don't remember that.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I think we were very clear it wouldn't be coming from the school department at all.
Right, okay.
No, that's really free cash, right? It's free cash. But I do want to go back to Mrs. Cole's point, because you know what? I agree with you. I think, you know, these are extraordinary times. We're all hearing about it. You know, we're getting minute, right? Chapter 70 money from the state, it's chapter 70. And, you know, we're in very tough circumstances. You know, the school department is running a transportation deficit. They're running a health insurance deficit. These are real expenses that have to be paid, and they're going to take away from what's going on in the classroom. You know, five, I voted for the $5 million for the high school athletic complex. I don't know when we voted on it, three or four months ago, I thought it was the right thing to do. You know, in light of the way things are today, I would vote for something scaled back. You know, do we need the $5 million to do right away? Maybe not. You know, new track for, you know, so that our high school kids can have a track and field program? Absolutely. But I do think now's, now's the time to step up and get creative about, okay, you know, on the one hand, we don't use free cash to cover operating expenses. On the other hand, the school department's been doing that for the last several years, right? School choice money in, Medicaid money in. We appropriate money out of free cash to cover operating expenses all the time when we cover police and fire department overtime.
It's one-time revenues.
It, but it's annual. You know, it's operating expenses. We do this every single year. Every single year, we know it's not in the budget. We know that it's going to come back, we're going to appropriate it. So those are operating expenses. So you know, I, you know, you, it's semantics. And I think, you know, now's the opportunity. You saw the numbers, you heard the numbers, the business office numbers. I mean, these are serious. You know, what, what kinds of things, you know, what kinds of choices are you going to make as the chairperson of the school committee? What are you going to cut? How many teachers? How many classroom aides? What kind of programs? And how are they going to suffer? You know, I, I think that's an important point that Mrs. Cole made.
I don't understand the connection between one-time revenues for a field, and, and that's what got this, this committee in trouble, is using one-time revenues for fixed costs. And you're suggesting, hold on, you didn't, let me finish.
Okay.
And what you've just suggested is that we start using one-time revenues, fixed costs.
We use, but, but you're saying that the city doesn't use one-time revenues to cover operating costs, and I'm saying that we do. We cover police and fire overtime all the time. The school department uses one-time revenues, like school choice money in, like Medicaid money reimbursement, to cover operating expenses like transportation all the time. So you can say that the city doesn't do that, but in fact, both the school department and the city does it. We vote all the time.
No.
Yeah, we do.
We don't hire, we have no salaries that are paid for with one-time costs.
We pay a lot of overtime.
If we use overtime, it's because in the fire department, we back bill through the ambulance service, and, and that money comes in and we appropriate it through free cash for overtime, but it ends up getting paid for by, so we don't appropriate anything that's a fixed cost that we know is going to be recurring cost.
Well, we, you know, I, I look at, I've been on the city council for eight years. I've voted a lot of times to appropriate overtime money for both the police and the fire department using free cash. And again, in the school department, there's another good example of the school department using one-time revenue, the school choice money and Medicaid money to cover operating expenses, transportation. I'm just saying, that's the reality. The reality this year is particularly harsh, given the state's situation, given the state's reduction in reimbursements that they're giving to communities in chapter 70 money. You know, let's take a look at things. You know, how, what, you know, I'm going to be very interested in the conversation that the school committee has about, you know, how are you going to come up with a budget and what are you going to cut? That's a challenge. So, you know, we can talk about, you know, having free cash and not spending it on operating costs, and we only spend it on one-time revenues. Well, you know, that, I would argue that that's, that's really not the case, that we've done it in the past, and that something creative needs to be done in this budget year.
Right. And I just read to you the whole sheet of everything that the city is spending their free cash on for these other fixed, these other costs that the school department doesn't pay for. I just went through the whole thing, but our debt services on 1.7 million dollars that we're paying on these other projects that don't come out of the school budget. So it, it, the fields are not, just take the equation. I know it sounds like a great thing to be able to use the fields. Resign the vote, take a vote, bring it back to the, to the council if you rescind the vote, then we don't have the money to do it. But that isn't going to change the school department's budget one penny. One penny. Not once. That isn't going to get the school department's budget to be any closer to balance than anything else would. So if that's, if that's what it takes to get the, out of the equation, or that it's going to gum up the conversation, then take it out of the equation.
Well, then how are you going to cover the transportation deficit and the health insurance deficit? How are you going to cover those?
Just like every other department has to. Every department gets a budget. We approved the budget last, you approved the budget.
I voted against the budget, by the way.
Okay. And the school department had a budget. And we have to live within the budget. That's the law. We're not exempt. The school department is exempt from living within its means. Pass the budget, and, and you've got to live within the budget.
Before we leave the fields, I just want to say I'm actually for the fields. I'd rather grab them while I can because we've been talking about these fields for a long time, but I completely agree that, you know, there's a lot of money needed in a lot of different places. The only thing, Dean, that I would request is, I know how much it costs to keep Doyle looking. looking the way Doyle looks. And anywhere I go and people hear that we're from Lemonster, they know, and have seen Doyle, think it's amazing. I just want to make sure we have the maintenance worked into whatever budget it needs to be worked into, so we don't run into some of the maintenance problems that we're running into other places. That's all.
I think if you look at the city side, we do a pretty good job of all our parks and our fields. I think we do a good job in that. We would do the, continue that same level of service on the.
Okay, so I just, you know, we need new turf in, what is it, every 10 years or whatever? I, I just want to make sure that in 10 years, we don't suddenly have to come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars to do it without, you know, knowing in advance. That's all.
Right.
Sue just had said about being interested in seeing how the conversation goes forward. And the mayor mentioned the, you know, you have a budget, you have to stick to it. So I just want to remind people and make it clear that we did not pass a budget last year. Our budget failed 5-4. You got presented with a net school spending budget. Heather and I made a motion and seconded, asking that the budget that got presented to you be more than net school spending. And we were told we were out of order. A legal opinion came back that we were not, but by then you already had the budget in front of you. And now this year, we're being told that what is expected of us is a net school spending budget and then a prioritized wish list, if you will. But that takes away our vote. We have the option to ask you for more, whether you get presented that or not is not, is after the fact. We have the option to make, to ask for a higher budget and then vote on it and go from there. So, being told what is expected of us takes that from us. So I just want to make clear what happened last year and why the budget was what it was and where we sit this year, and we haven't voted yet. So, whether we pass a net school spending budget or ask for more has not been determined yet. And I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody.
Yeah, and also you should, you should also carry the burden and the responsibility of where that money comes from. Today, not only was, was it May Day and the first of May, but it was tax day. And I confront and face every taxpayer who leaves taxpayers' office there to pay their bill, that looks at me and says, you know, it's getting tougher and tougher to pay my bills. So, just as much as it is our responsibility to just spend money and say we need more money, it's our responsibility to also to show people where this money's going to come from. We've lost complete contact with everyone in terms of where this money is and whose money it is. We've forgotten how hard people work to survive, to be able to keep their house and maintain their house in the city. We just talk about spending millions like it's nothing and, and, and no conscious decision about where this money comes from. So, we have the responsibility, as we talk about spending more money, is to talk about where this money's coming from. Because an increase, a property tax increase to get us another $1,600,000 is another 2.5% increase in people's taxes. So, the money just doesn't come from somewhere. It has to come from people's pockets. That's where it comes from. And the reality is, people struggle. Like, I, I, I'm the person that they see when they come walking across the hall to let me know. It's been tough. So, we can ask for as much money as we want. The reality is, we have to show where that money's coming from. And that's our job.
And I don't envy that piece, and I can imagine how hard it is.
No, that's our job.
What I'm saying is, I can imagine how hard it must be to wear two hats and try to find the balance. I'm just saying, and, and nobody disagrees. We all know that the formula is 24 years old and it needs to be done. But in the meantime, while we try to fight for that process, we still have schools full of kids that deserve a high-quality education. And if we are talking about all of the, doing the bare minimum, that is not a high-quality education. The other thing is, a net school spending budget may pass. I don't know. But we get to vote on that and get, have the conversation and not get told what we're expected to pass. And that was my point.
No, I, no, no. I asked that the budget come to my office with net school spending, and there's a reason for that. Last year, we appropriated another $555,000 in the budget. There was never a conversation about it. We never, the school committee never voted on where that money was going to go. I don't know where that money went. That's not going to happen again. And that's my responsibility to the taxpayers, to be able to say, we appropriated another over half a million dollars, and it got spent somewhere. We're not sure exactly where it got spent. Nobody took it. It got spent, it got spent where it was supposed to, but with no accountability. And that's not going to happen again. So the basis of a net school spending baseline budget is going to allow me to communicate with the public as to if we spend one more penny over net school spending, this is where it will go. And the school committee will vote that another penny spent will be in this area, it will be our priority collectively. It's not going to be, well, I wanted something else or somebody else wanted. No. It will be a, a vote of the school committee saying, if we get more money, this is how we're going to spend it, here's where it's going to go. So this will be a very, a very, very clear budget in terms of communicating and very transparent to the public in terms of where their taxpayers' dollars go. If it's going to, whether it's net school spending or not, or above or below, at least they'll have a good tool and a good effective document that, that is very clear to them in terms of where our priorities are. Of course, it can't be, everything is a priority, obviously, but something has to have more priority than something else. And in terms of funding, we have to be able to demonstrate that and navigate that, the public through that process. And that's what I ask for. So, I do have a right to ask for a budget to come to myself in a particular fashion as the same one that I asked every department in the city to be able to do, which I've asked every year in a, so, what you communicate to the city council, if you want to ask them for the whole budget, that's, that's fine. I have no issue. But when the budget comes to myself, I need to be able to understand this in a clearer, better, more communicative, you know, a better way of communicating, so that I can understand. So we're not spending $555,000 in addition to our budget, after we spent eight months talking about our budget, never brought up once, $555,000. That's a disservice to the public.
Heather and then Ron.
Yes.
So I think what Wendy is trying to say, which I completely agree with, is that we shouldn't be forced, we shouldn't be told, we shouldn't be dictated to, this is the budget you're going to put on my desk. You read the statement before every single school committee meeting, and it says that we do what is in the best interest of the students of Lemonster. And that's what we all run on, and that's why we're all sitting here. And the fact of the matter is, if we want to vote for a certain amount of money over net school spending, you should be able to clearly see what items we want to spend that money on, and then you make that decision when that budget sits on your desk before it gets to city council. When you say, I want a net school spending budget, and then give me your wish list, you're not the champion of education. You're giving us leftovers. And that is how it feels, and that is how it is perceived. So if you want to, if you want to invest in education, then you invest in education. And you say, these are the things, where's Ned? One, how much Ned? 1.4?
It's 1.655 a year for NY8.
There you go. So, when we make a motion to pass a budget, it then gives the opportunity for you to look at the things that we want to spend that extra money on, should you have it. And then it gives the city council the opportunity to then become involved in our process. Because then, for once, in 24 years, you would have the opportunity to look at what the school needs. And then you become involved in that process with us, because the only thing you can do is cut a budget, which you have not had the opportunity to do for 24 years. That.
I appreciate your thoughts, but I, I stand by, I, I think I've, I've thought this through thoroughly. It's the process that I think is, will work. It's better, it's a better tool for me to be able to communicate, and I don't think the council wanted to come here to, sort of, hear this debate. But that's where I stand on it. I appreciate everybody's thoughts and opinions on it. I can understand where you might be on it. But I will not allow what happened last year and the year before. We've had 24 years of balanced budgets, we've actually finished with surpluses. Last two years, this has been an absolute disaster. This is embarrassing. We should be ashamed of ourselves about what happened here. And this should never happen again, and I'm not going to allow it to happen again.
Ron is first, and then.
Go ahead.
Well, Ron, you were first.
Well, I'm going to let him lead.
Okay. Two points I want to make. You know, Mayor, at our last meeting, you asked us to prioritize, sorry, you asked us to prioritize essentially what we want to cut to get to that net school spending number, which is part of our job, absolutely. But at the same time, you know, we actually, you know, we expect the city, from the mayor's point and the city council's point, to also prioritize. So, you know, going back to Sue's point about the $5 million field, and Nona's point about public perception, how are we supposed to justify saying that we're spending millions on a field when, you know, we're talking about cutting essential services in the school district? And, you know, the second point I wanted to make was you said, like all the other city departments, we need to live within our budget. Well, while we have every branch of government of the city here, we have to make it abundantly clear, we cannot live within this budget. We're talking about getting to a net school spending budget, or, you know, trying to come up with innovative ideas to get us to that number, which is extremely important. We have to do that. We have to try and, you know, cut back services as little as possible. But the ultimate point is, even with the net school spending budget, we are facing tremendous hurdles. And I know the responsibility for that is on the city, a huge portion of that is on the state. But we're looking at consequences if we don't address this problem. We're going to face lawsuits, we're going to face a number of challenges, particularly in the realm of special education. You know, you just heard from Ned Pratt, in order to get to compliance, we have to spend $1.6 million. And I know we can't pull that money out of thin air, but we have to start thinking about the long-term picture here, or we're going to face serious consequences.
Claire, Claire.
First of all, let me thank you for inviting us here. Somehow, I don't feel like this is a joint meeting of the city council and school committee.
And I apologize. This should have been, this is, these are things that are on our side. I apologize for letting that slip.
No, no apology necessary. But since this was listed and out in the public as a joint meeting, I, and I'm sure many of my colleagues got, note, many emails from people who think we have the ability to raise your budget, and asking us, and they think this is a budget meeting tonight for some reason. I'm not sure why people have that impression. But I got a lot of emails today asking me to support the budget. And I don't know, I didn't even know there was a budget out yet. So, I want to just make that clear, that we don't have the ability to raise the budget. We deal with what comes down to us. We have priorities too. We like to see some things that are different. I sat on the school committee for six years. I understand what it's like to, to meet net school spending. I also sat on the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the year 2000 as the president of the Mass Municipal Association as their representative. I spent a year and a half, Senator Antonioni was the chair of the Education Committee on the Senate side, and Lyda Atkins was the rep side. And we spent a year and a half coming up with no answers, because there were so many different parties at the table, that they couldn't, nobody could come to a consensus. So it was just put aside. And now it's finally at a point where there needs to be the administration to look at it, because there are some budget numbers. But I guess the bottom line is, listening to all of you on that side, because we are one side and the other side here, is there a crisis? Because teachers have asked me if they're going to be laid off. I don't have that answer. I have nothing to do with that. Principals, I think, should be nervous, and are nervous if they don't know what's happening with their schools. What is the situation? Maybe, I'd like to hear it, are we in a situation where we're going to have massive layoffs? What's, what is your plan if you're going to stay net school spending? What is a realistic plan that you can put out to the public, so they know what's happening? I mean, I, I think that's a legitimate question, because I'm not quite sure.
Well, let me, let me summarize this, and this might summarize everything, right? The reality is, the school committee can, I asked for the budget in this particular way because I want to be able to explain that budget to anybody. Not have to look at it, I want to be able to explain it. They stop me in front of the tax office or downtown at a festival, I want to be able to explain to them. I want to be accountable. That's number one. So that happens for every department. And I asked the school committee to do the same thing. What they submit to you, I guess, apparently from what I hear, is they're just going to submit to you what they decide they want to submit, and that's fine. At the end of the day, you're going to have a couple of options, correct? You can, you can approve the whole thing, and that means a tax increase. Or the other option is, you have to cut other departments to fund the school department, correct?
I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about what you're going to do with your budget before, when it comes to it.
And I'm just saying that at the end of the day, I'm starting at the very end, and the city council understands this thoroughly. There are, at the end of the day, all of this is going to come down to, you're either going to raise taxes or cut another department. Right? I mean, that's, are we on in agreement with the, with the city council on that? I mean, is that basically, are you in agreement with that? That at the end of the day, through the budget process, it means either cutting another department, other departments, or increasing, or raising taxes? Is that, are we in agreement with that, or no? I mean.
I'm not going to speak for the council.
We systematically raise taxes 2.5 percent.
Correct.
Every year.
Right.
And, you know, we have the option, because we have excess levy capacity.
To raise them above.
To raise taxes more than 2.5 percent.
Right.
Which obviously is a tremendous responsibility, given the impact to all of this and our taxpayers. But, you know, I, I think your point is well-taken. At the end of the day, it's going to come from somewhere.
Exactly. And that's all I'm trying to say is, after this whole process, after it all gets sort of, you know, melted down, or boiled down, it's going to come down to those two things.
Twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven years ago, Steve Pearl was elected there, and he got a grant to do a municipal finance study by Pete Marwicke at the time. And the conclusion that they came up with is that, you know, city government is highly dependent on personnel. So, at the end of the day, discretionary spending of the city and town is someplace about 2 percent. There's not a lot of room, and that's what people have to understand generally. And, and personnel expenses have the tendency of increasing at a dramatic, in a dramatic way, especially when you factor in benefits like health insurance and other things. And then, you know, on the school side, we have other drivers with respect to that, you know, our marriage with the state, that isn't a happy one. It's just not an easy situation all the way around. But to the council of freedom, we don't appropriate money. We, we can, we can cut money, but we can pass money. That's, that's essentially the city council's function. But, you know, as the mayor says, in the end, either if you're going to raise additional revenue, it's got to come from somewhere, and it's either coming from an increase in taxes or cutting another budget.
And that is a key discussion point that we always never enter into that discussion. That needs to be discussed.
And the other problem is, is that a lot of those other costs are people. And a lot of those other people have collective bargaining agreements that were hamstrung by. So this is not an easy problem.
Right.
Just to follow up on the Pearl administration, I sat on the school committee at that point. And we made a huge mistake, looking back, and the mayor will understand, because we walked into it with the Padula bill.
The teacher's deferral.
The teacher's deferral in the Padula bill. That was supposed to save us, did for the first year, but then they let you do it a second year, and that was a disaster. We were digging a hole, trying to pay it off for how many years after that? Saved the day for the moment.
Right.
Saved the day for the moment, you know, but it was, it was not a good thing to do, in the end.
And just for a point, I don't think that we, as a collective group, have decided, you know, what our budget is, what we would be sending to you, the mayor, and therefore the city council. And we are working very diligently, and certainly the finance committee has been putting in numerous hours, to really ascertain, you know, where does it make sense? Of course, the administration obviously is heavily involved with whatever cuts we choose. At this point, we can't tell you where they're going to be, because we have not made any definitive, you know, decisions. But it is something that people are talking about, you know, every time they meet, and how we're going to make this, you know, work as best as possible, knowing that it's not going to be pleasant, or anything that any of us want to do. But we are going to need to do something.
Claire, can I ask you a question? Where you sat on the Foundation Budget Review, I'm someone who likes to advocate, and I often will bring things to the school committee. Can we, you know, sign this and get it to the governor? And, you know, I hand-delivered things to him before. So, you know, I think it's really important, as a community, where this is affecting so many people, how do we, you know, is this something that you, as a city council, would support, you know, sending something to the governor, you know, just as we're going to be doing, saying, this is really important, this foundation budget has to be addressed? Because...
The foundation budget, just, they just reviewed it, and they just came up with more realistic formulas.
Right, but they're not implementing them.
I'm not gonna point to the state rep, but, you know, the House and Senate has to look at those numbers, and convince the governor to raise those numbers. I mean, the formula could, would help us.
Right.
But, you know, that's not, you can advocate for it, and you start with your reps and senators, and get them to support it. I don't know if the representative wants to add to that, but that's where it's at now. We've had a representative, we advocated as Mass Municipal to support, and we had a representative on, the president last year, and he served with the mayor, Kevin Dumas was on for us.
Mr. President, would it be okay if I just went around one last time, see if there are any other closing questions? I think we've, the reality is, the crisis is the numbers that you heard, that, you know, we have a bit of a deficit. We won't really know until June 30th, what, you know, because there's, still could be some closeouts and other accounts, and that's still pending. And then the other real crisis is next year. You hear, you hear what the pending issues are, in terms of just beginning the year with increase in healthcare cost, increases in cost in steps, you know, just those two things alone, and then transportation, and the special ed, you know, that's where you're at to begin the next year. And that's what, I think, the purpose of the meeting was, is just get this out here, sort of on the radar screen. And I think, to some extent, I've always tried to put a balanced budget together. When I submit it to the city council, that's balanced in terms of all needs in the community. You know, in some communities, they take the entire budget and just give it to the, you know, everything anybody asks for, and they give it to the city council. Any department asks for anything, and then that goes, they just hand it to the city council, and then the city council has to decide. And I've never, I've not once done that, and I think you understand I haven't done that. And I've done that because I've tried to listen to all departments, and that's a clear representation of, when you hear the budget hearings, that pretty close to meeting the high demands and needs of the community in each department, even though we can't. I seem to be the pivotal point here all the time, is somehow or another, I have more money to give than I do, or something, there's, you know, there's a war chest of money sitting somewhere, and it's discretionary, we can give it to you, but we don't. That's not the reality. The reality is, there's so much money, there's only so much money, and that it has to be allocated in certain places, and it has to be prioritized, and, you know, and each department thinks they're the highest priority, and they are. At the end of the day, somebody has to prioritize the budget to give it to the city council, and I think I've done that, and I think I've done a decent job of that in the past. Again, the whole budget can be just given to the whole city council, and then the city council decides what gets cut and what gets funded, right? And so, there is another option, beyond just getting the budget and not being able to add to it, to cut to it, is to just give the whole budget to the city council, and then you decide. I haven't done that, I'm not an advocate of that, I don't think it's responsible to myself or anybody, but it is another option. So, having said that, any other questions? Counselor, Dobrowski?
I just, the 1.655 figure, what exactly does that represent?
On which thing, John?
Special ed.
Oh, special ed.
What is that, exactly?
Last year, in our budget discussions, what I believe was, that was the difference between, so Ned had come in in his budget presentation and said, you know, here are some of the driving forces behind some of the needs that I need to be able to comply, you know, to comply with regulations and the state standards and all, and that was the difference of it. So, he's saying, going into it, Ned, for the next year, you're gonna need $1.6 million, just for that, alone.
Just to comply with the spending.
In addition to, correct. And that's staffing, and all the other areas of compliance.
All compliance, though. I mean, I think some of that is what we need and want.
Yes.
And I'm just like, the truant officer isn't part of compliance.
Yes, please.
I don't know, I don't know.
My name is Ned Pratt, and I'm the special ed director for Lamonster Public Schools, I've been employed here since 2012, seems like since 2000-something. So, the positions that, for the last fiscal year and the next fiscal year are being proposed, really reflect a combination of items. The first swath is true compliance, which means that if we don't provide these positions in a timely basis, what's going to happen is, the state is going to, parents by rights, and certainly, I agree with them, will file complaints with the State Department of Ed, which we'll have to address. One, which is a public record, was filed this year, it's about the Sammerson Middle School Program, Life Skills, where we had too many students in one classroom, and the state's order was, hire a teacher. So that's what's gonna happen, I mean, we're gonna have a series of those pieces happening. We have other positions that, like Kristin mentioned, truant officer or school attendance officer, I see that as a compliance issue, because what's happened is, is that through a lot of our dealings over the past several years, with folks moving in, folks who were homeless for a time and stayed here, other situations, you know, we need to continue to check, to see if folks are actually living in Lamonster, when they say they are. And over the years, we've found that some folks aren't, and they're actually living in other communities, attending here in Lamonster. So, I see that as a way to make sure that we have compliance for spending the money that we're given. And then there's other positions that really reflect a situation where, in the budget, we're trying to, in my proposal, we're trying to stem the tide, so that there is no further compliance. That's the two, the three-year look, where I know these situations and trends are coming, and we need to provide the positions. We did, with the support of the school committee, taxpayers, we've reinvested a lot of money in special education. Now, in 2012, we were spending about $6.5 million in out-of-district tuitions. This year, we're on track for about $5.5. And all that money has been reinvested in special ed and gen ed programs in Lamonster. If the original amount of that $6.5 back in FY11 was to be calculated now, we'd be looking at about $8.5 million in out-of-district tuitions. So, while we're trying to keep kids closer to home, do programming, sometimes successfully, sometimes not, we continue to try to make sure we have a broad and deep program for our students, all students, because our district professes to care about every single student, and my job is to make sure that we uphold that, as a special ed director.
So the 1.655, that includes the true compliance plus these other positions?
Right. And those other positions probably, I don't have the figures in front of me right now, probably about $300,000 would be not the true compliance positions, but certainly, in two years, we'll be looking at them as being compliance.
Okay.
No.
That's just an increase in the budget.
Just an increase in positions necessary.
An increase in positions.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? So, Mr. President, just to boil this all down, explain to the general public, as we move forward in the budget process, the budget process is tax revenue, Council of Bonanza said, or stated, usually we add a 2.5 percent increase in that, and new growth. That's our, that gives us our total amount for our budget. From there, we decide ultimately where that total amount goes. As far as other new revenues, in terms from the state, or whatever, whatever they decide on per student, if there's an increase, other than that, that is the total amount of revenue that the city takes in. There is no other federal money, there's no other state money, I'm saying this to you, but obviously to share this with the general public. And that, for us, is our total budget. And then ultimately, we have to decide where those funds get spent. And that's what gives us, at the end of the day, when we start our new budget, ultimately that is where we get our funding sources. There are no other funding sources available to the city, other than grants that we get that are one-time, that aren't really figured into the budget. So, everything you heard here tonight is in addition, in addition to what we have allocated for funds for fiscal year 18. So, everything you heard tonight is in addition to. As a baseline is, we basically look at last year, and add a 2.5 percent, which just barely covers any sort of minor increases that we've seen. And then from there on, this all gets added to it. Is that a good summarization of it? It's a good summary of it, I don't know, maybe somebody else can explain it better, but that's our funding sources.
Mayor, just as a last question, if you, the school committee finishes your deliberations and comes up with a budget, and feels that you absolutely need more than, without going to the taxpayer, would you consider using stabilization?
Oh, no, that would be, that would shoot our bond rating right down, I think. That would be dangerous, yeah. Is that why you asked the question? But it would hurt us, yeah.
Well, if you were in a crisis, that's kind of like the definition of stabilization. I'm using the term crisis.
Right. The problem is...
I agree, I'm not suggesting...
Our bond rating companies are gonna wanna see us correct the problem.
I understand that.
They wanna see us correct the problem. Using stabilization to fix the problem is only gonna get you through that one year, and then, then you're still left with the problem. This is the year, unfortunately, we're gonna have to right-size ourselves in more ways than one. We've gotta, we've gotta get the ship back on here, we're spending more money than we're budgeted, and that's clearly a problem. We've gotta fix ourselves.
I only asked you if it was an absolute crisis, and there was no other alternative.
It's not gonna fix it, because it's just gonna be a temporary Band-Aid, and that's the reason they don't wanna see you use stabilization account. Stabilization's for, you know, you have a big storm, you don't remember the storms we had?
I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know you're asking me just to sort of put it out there, but that's the purpose of the, and that's what's got most communities in trouble, is using the stabilization or one-time revenue for fixed cost. These are all fixed costs that we're talking about. I mean, the special ed, the healthcare cost, employee raises, and all those things are all things that are, you know, fixed cost, and hard to get around. And, you know, that's why I say, we gotta get them fixed. We took on, you know, the new school, we've taken on these other projects, we've given raises, now the school committee has to, you know, it has to do its job. You know, it did its job approving these other things, and now we've gotta come up with a budget that funds them, or we have to make adjustments wherever necessary. That's our job. We made those commitments.
So, you passed the budget.
If I may, I think I heard June 1st is what you're looking for, for a deadline for the schools.
I've asked all departments to have that same kind of budget. And let me just explain that, I think Cody sort of did a general overview of what I said. So, when we do the school projects, or any projects, what we usually do is, we say, we have $20 million to do the project, and then what we do is, we call, what we do is other things called bid alternates. So we say, well, we really would like to recondition nurses' room, or, you know, we wanted to put solar on the roof, but we weren't sure we're gonna have enough money, but if the bids come in lower, and there's some extra money in that bid, here are a couple of things that we'd like to do, the bid alts. We did it in this project, right, Mike? We did five bid alternates, if we had money to do them, and I think we were able to pay for three. And so, what I've said is, come up, same sort of thing, come up with your budget, and then if there's additional dollars that we have, that we have, where would those dollars go specifically? And that's the way I've asked the budget to be submitted by all departments. I've asked that of every department in the past, have not asked that of the school department. This year, I have. And that was based on the extra money that got put towards the schools last year, that we never really had a conversation about. You ended up appropriating the money, school department got it, but we really didn't have a whole lot of discussion about that, where those dollars might go, because it came after the budget process. And that may have been the reason for that.
You're just talking really specifically about capital, though, right? Capital projects? You know, over and above whatever the budget is, the additional things for people, it's just, it's just capital request. It has nothing to do with programs, or class size, or anything else really having to do with the school department. It's just, it's just capital projects, is what I'm trying to get at.
I don't think I understand the question, what was it?
Every department, right, comes in with a budget.
Right.
And then you have, you've asked them for a wish list, and the wish list is really a list of capital projects.
No, no, no.
Oh, no? Oh, okay, good.
He's talking about appropriating the school system.
No. For instance, the police department is looking for four police officers, the firefighters, you know, they need more people. DPW's looking for more people, those kinds of things. There's other things that they have as, that they're in their budget every year, that at the end of the day, after prioritizing, you know, we just can't afford it. But I do ask them to prioritize. So I understand, if there is additional funds that we were able to come up with, or if there's a grant, I know exactly where that would be. So if they say, my highest priority is two more police officers, for traffic, one for traffic and one for something else, I know exactly, if we have additional dollars, maybe it's just one police officer, I know exactly where those dollars would go. And I ask that of every department, health department, the rec department, everyone communicates their budget in that fashion. I've asked the school department to do the same thing. So, if we go above net school spending, and I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying that's the baseline. Every year, let me just read it while we're here, every year, we've gone above net school spending. So, but we always talk about a net school spending budget. The reality is, we go above. So, '07, one of the worst, couple of worst years we had, fiscally through the state, the state cut us $9 million. We still were, in '07, we're over by almost $1.1 million. In '08, we were $1.5 million. '09, we were $531,000 over net school spending. In '10, we were $80,000. In '11, school department didn't spend it, so we were under, but we gave it back the following year. In '13, we were $2.9 million over net school spending. In '14, we were $301. In '15, we were about $600,000 over net school spending, and then in '16, we were about $308. So, what I'm saying is, it's just for the purpose of creating a baseline, that's all. So we know where that line is from every department. And then, in addition to, if there are other ones, or, you know, my biggest thing is, seeing the priority. I want to see communicated from every department, including the school department, if there was more money, what would your priority be? That's much clearer and better and more effective way for me to communicate, when I know exactly what those priorities are, and list it. It can't be, here are a hundred things, and they're all our priority. They have to be prioritized. And I thought it was a pretty simple approach, so, to answer your, council president, to answer the question, June 1st. And that's, soon as I get it, I'm gonna go through it, and you're getting it right away. So you have plenty of time. In fact, if you wanna start scheduling hearings, you could do that, because the plan is to be right on time. Okay? Yes?
But just to be clear, net school spending is net school spending. June 1st, the budget you receive, is net school spending.
No, no, that's me. That's coming to me.
Okay. Whatever they get it, it's net school spending, and any money you have after the fact...
Nobody said that. Nobody said that.
That money that you just talked about was not part of the net school spending budget. It was added afterwards, when you had extra money.
No.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Ron, Mr. Wolf.
That was a budget, that was a budget. All this conversation we've had tonight is basically about the health of education. Can't get any more simpler. I just want each and every one of you, what would happen if you went to the ER, and all of a sudden, you were told you had to have surgery? And then somebody came in and said, oh, you know what, we had a limit on spending today, and we don't have a surgeon, so you're gonna have to just suffer. What do you think would happen? You wouldn't tolerate it. So why are we supposed to tolerate this idea of net school spending? I oppose net school spending, because as I said earlier, in another area, net school spending, and following the guidelines of net school spending, you're just spiking your face and cutting off your nose. I am dead at second against, there was me and three other people who voted against it last year, and I remember being told that, oh, you can't do it, and then we got the note from Boston saying, yes, you can go above what was asked. It's as simple as that. So I disagree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. But you understand, it's a baseline, all right? As much as people here wanna try to turn it into something it isn't, it's a baseline as a tool to be able to communicate that this is the net school spending, and then if we get more money than that, and there's more money put towards education, we can communicate to the public where we spent it, and that we took the time... we can communicate to the public where we spent it and that we took the time to list it and prioritize it. And so, that's the misinterpretation of this. Don't, 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 don't just sort of pin it in as a, this is an absolute, this is all that the school department is going to get because that's, that, that's, nobody's had that. And that is, and I haven't said that I'm just turning what you turned it to me to the school department. I said, turn it in as a, the budget is a form of communication, correct? Communicating the, the, the school department's needs or its wants and desires in that, that communication should be prioritized. And this is, this, this mechanism or this tool that I asked for is going to very clearly define the priorities of the school committee. And that, to me, is, is progress.
The problem, sir, is as follows. The problem is, when you speak like that, there will always be collateral damage. So we have to put in our fingers where we're going to assign the collateral damage. Next first person that wants to be part of collateral damage, please raise your hand. And, and anybody out there in TV land, raise your hand if you want to be part of collateral damage. See how many volunteers you've got? None. Zero. I say, look for the money. You can find the money. The money is there. It's not magic.
Mr. President, any other words or comments? Yes?
I, I have a quick comment. I agree with you that a budget is definitely all about communication. It tells a story. It tells, it lays out what the priorities are, it lays out what the programs are. And I think, you know, net, the net school spending formula, and, and it's very easy to talk about because it is the minimum required by the state. The city can't do any less. So when you talk about net school spending as the baseline, it's not really a baseline. I mean, it's, it's the minimum. You know, call it what it is. It's the minimum amount that the state will let the city get away with spending on education.
No, I think, again, I don't know whether it's deliberate or not, it's simply a way of creating a baseline for every department.
No, baseline you'd be doing, but you'd be doing zero-based budgeting. If you want a baseline, you'd go to every department, have them do zero-based budgeting. That's how it's done.
Okay. Maybe this is a better way. For me, as the person that has to take all of these budgets, 20 of them or whatever, all of these budgets and put them together, it's, it's so much easier for me to look and know that each department went through the exercise of spending taxpayers' dollars in the same fashion they would spend theirs, that they went through the exercise of looking and thinking and saying, if there were additional dollars above whatever that baseline is, whatever that number is, here's where those dollars would be and these are our priorities. That, to me, is a, a very good process. I think it's helpful, it's certainly helpful to me and, but it's very helpful for me when I present the city council the budget. It's very helpful for me to be able to get down there and do a budget presentation, to be able to explain to you where the city's at, where we've been, where we're at and where we think sort of the pressing needs are. I've always done that. This time, I think it's going to be a little easier for me and especially since we have one month, to be able to do that, not only with all the other departments, but with the school department budget as well. So, for anybody that's saying that that's all the city's going to fund is this one thing. I, I said, it's a baseline. It's a place to work from. It's a place to begin. And all those other priorities are just going to allow us, every one of us, when we leave the budget process, if there's another $100,000 spent, every single one of us are going to know, every one of us, sit around this table and the public will know, we spent another $100,000 and here's where we spent it. We can't say that for the past years. It gets so confusing about where this money goes, what comes towards net school spending. The average person just wants to know, what is the city alumnus to spend on education? Direct, indirect, foundation budget? This thing's so confusing. All they know is they go and pay their tax bill. That's what they know. And they want to know, how much do I spend on education or, or, or public safety or what do I spend on these things? We can't tell anybody that. These numbers are all over the place, everywhere. We can't even tell them, you know, we spend money on capital improvements, but it doesn't count towards net school spending. Nobody even knows what that means. So, this is a very good tool to be able to communicate to the public. Total, total amounts, total costs, projections, and then if there's additional dollars to spend, we know exactly where they're going. So, nobody has said anything about how much, we haven't even got through the budget process yet. It's just, I think, a way that's going to help me and I think help everyone else to better understand the budget.
I think the library's about to close us in. I just have to call.
Yes. Okay. We need a motion to adjourn on the side of the school committee.
Can I just say one, one fast thing?
Yes.
I think we all know on both sides of this table, and I wish we had more communication because I do like to hear from all of you, I think we all need more money for, the police need more money, we need more money, everyone needs more money. And what, I think with Glenn's good guidance here and with all the hard work Jim's doing, if we can show you a budget that shows what will happen at net school spending, if, if that is what we get, we'll be ready to go. You know, this year, we weren't ready to go and that's why we're in the, the trouble that we're in right now. So we'll be ready to go. Whatever this committee decides to vote on, we will vote on as a committee and we'll present it and then whatever happens, happens, but we'll still be ready to work with whatever number we're handed in the end. Because that's what our job is, is why we fight for children. And that doesn't mean that, I just want to make sure that, it doesn't mean that every position that has isn't necessary and needed. I just don't want it quoted in the papers saying that they're all part of, we're not in compliance by that amount.
Can I explain to you exactly what I said?
And, and I'm saying thank you for that. Yes?
Do you have more questions?
Yes.
Again, given the state of affairs, we are one body, whether we like it or not, we're all elected, but school committee and city council, I mean, maybe this is an opportunity to look at potentially sharing services among departments where we could save money, you know, HR, whatever. I, I mean, I just want to throw that out there, but I think we need to look and be creative because we are in a crisis and the long term, that might benefit everyone. So, I, I throw that out there. I don't know who would be able to take charge of it, but I, I really think that that's something we should look at.
I think I have to give credit to, to probably, I have the best department heads ever, anywhere. They do this, they work as a team, they work together.